Welcome you to the Newark City School Board meeting this August the 9th, 2018. At 6:32.
April?
April.
That was a quick month.
See what happened, the winter so long that just...
And so, and so it sounds like you know there's really no respect for the president. The peanut gallery feels free to chime in. April the 9th, at 6:33 now, it was going to be 6:32. Would you call the roll please?
Mr. Blaine?
Here.
Mr. Blowers?
Yes.
Ms. Nicken?
Here.
Mr. Weber?
Here.
And Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Weber, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
The pledge of allegiance is issued by the United States of America, a true republic for which it stands, my nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first things first, we have a couple of young men with us who made Newark proud, their families proud. They were state-qualified wrestlers this year. Levi McKee and Hunter Thornberry, you guys need to come to the podium. Give us five to eight minutes on each of you. Hunter, you're first.
My name's Hunter Thornberry. I'm a senior this year, I'll be graduating, going to Audubon University. This past year, I had 51 wins and nine losses on the season. I ended up taking eighth at state and was second team all metro. As a team, we also ended up winning our first conference title, I think ever. To my knowledge, it's the first time ever. So that was a really big deal. We also haven't had a state placer qualifier in four years or something like that, so... I also wrestle 152 pounds, I didn't really say that, but I gained a little weight since then, so... That's all.
I'm Levi McKee, I'm also a senior. I wrestle 195, and after high school, I'm hoping to go to Audubon Hunter. I have a visit this one said, and I'll see how that goes. This is my second first team OCC as a, at my weight class in the conference.
I know what you're thinking, "Audubon's a much bigger place." I know that's what you're thinking.
Hey, well, these fellows are making your way through. Again, congratulations, guys. Wonderful young men coming out of Newark. The Angels of '89 have a presentation for us as well. They're just going to update us a little bit, and I don't know what else, so you guys have a flip.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's got wine today, but I don't need any.
Good evening, everyone. We just want to give you guys an update of our organization. We started it about five or six years ago, and it's something that we came up with on our classmates that passed away. We decided to do this instead of a plan B tree or something. You know, or a match, and so...
We are part of the class, the graduating class of 1989.
Eighty-nine, true, yeah.
I went to school with these guys in seventh grade.
Are you proud of them?
I'm sorry.
So, and what we do is, we're trying to help students in Newark that are in need and that are struggling. We just want to get back to Newark, because they've helped us, you know, helped us graduate in our classes. We're very proud of our class, we're very successful. I'm the president of the club, Jeff Harris, and then Kristy Baldwin is the vice president. She's a schoolteacher in Grove City, she's been over there for over 20 years. Julie's secretary, she's a principal here. And we have Brooke Baldwin, who's the treasurer, she's a schoolteacher at Granville. And then we have Phil Frye, real estate guy. And then we also have Shirley Smith, who's worked at the Mercy Library for almost 30 years. And then we have Darren Detner, who's a firefighter. And one of the neat things about the committee is, we have one person, Priti Junior High, from Roosevelt Wilson and Lincoln, and so we've got the whole team. So Julie's going to tell you some of the things that we've done.
Well, one of the things that makes my position in Newark as an elementary principal convenient for this committee as well, is that I can work as a liaison between the people at the high school and fill me in on needs that students there may have. So they contact me, and I, you know, share that information with the rest of the committee, but we've supported high school students through kindergarten students, really. We've provided money for families to get birth certificates, for their students to get registered with kindergarten registration, so it's one of the requirements. Sometimes Mary Lilo will call and say, "We've got some families that need some help, can the Angels help us out with this?" And we're like, "Absolutely, if we can get on the beginning phase of getting kids in school, we absolutely want to help with that." We've helped with fees for college application processing, we've helped with simple things like a calculator. There was a student whose mother was very ill, and we helped provide gift cards and food cards for her to get back and forth to visit her mom while she was in the hospital. So it's really like, we've provided coats when needed. What's that? Oh, and the high school, the supply closet up there for toiletries and that kind of thing, we've provided money for that. So we just run the gamut, like we're not a huge, huge pocket money, but we can help in these little ways, and we do some fundraising throughout the year just to help kids along the way with any need that they might have. So we're just trying to spread the word so that more people know about us, the high school guidance counselors know, and I think most of the teachers, and, but as many people that know about us as possible, we feel like they can, if they hear about a student that needs help, then they can maybe send our direction. So we're just trying to spread our word.
And every fall, we go to a high school football game for Newark High and sell raffle tickets and for awareness, and also we do the same thing at a basketball game in the winter. And we also accept donations to Angels of '89, 24 Monroe Avenue, here in Newark, Ohio 43055.
Thank you for just spreading the word.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, certainly need to see folks supporting the community. It's one of the things that makes Newark stand out, is the way the businesses and the folks in the community support the schools and our students, and I certainly appreciate that. That's how you get a Levi McKee and a Hunter Thornberry, and you get kids who are given opportunities to do things they may not get to because of individuals like that. So I'm going to introduce Dale Dewellin. Dale, you need to wave at the camera right over there. Head of Lincoln County ESC. And just another way, I don't know if he's keeping an eye on us, but I know we also work together, so one of the two, and we're glad he's here with us. And Tim Kraft, I appreciate your patience. Tim is with the state auditorium, he's on overtime right now. And there is an award given for an exit audit, and our auditing folks are here, and Tim, can you make that presentation? Do we all kind of say what is it?
It's my honor and pleasure to be here. I presented this award to New York City Schools, and I presented it to the fully open board. This is the first time both of them have met together here in Newark, so that's awesome to continue to see him so well, and the city of Newark to be in such good hands with him. Let's get, my name's Tim Kraft, I'm with the auditor state's office. We're here to present the auditor state award with distinction, which the auditor state award with distinction is the highest award the auditor state's office gives out. To receive the auditor state award with distinction is given to the entities that found the annual caper, toply financial reports, accordance with GAAP, as well as receive a clean audit report. Clean audit report means your financial audit is not continuing to find recovery, material citations, material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, staying audit findings, or inquestable costs. That's a lot of audit speak, but I'd like to talk about this award is how hard it is to receive this award. Beluga and I, Ohio has almost 6,000 levels of government, forms of government here in the state of Ohio. From the Ohio State University to the smallest township in Midtown. Out of those 6,000 public entities, roughly only 5% of them receive this award. So it's basically say you're in the 95th percentile, and since we're in school, I'll do the blade joke, you aced your audit. So with that, I'd like to present this award to you.
I would like also to bring my staff, if you guys just come over here, I'd like to have a picture, because this cannot be done without the hard work that they put day in and day out. I also want to extend my thanks to three staff, which is Pat Stock, who was the assistant treasurer, who retired the last December, and also Jeff Anderson, who was a part of this audit too as well. So thanks to all those individuals as well, and thank you for all the hard work that you do, because without what they put day in and day out, this cannot happen at all. And actually, I think they need to be a part of this presentation as well, because it's well deserved. So with that being said, I'd like to have a picture of all of us, and 10% of this, so come over here. You want a part of that as well?
Thank you. Thanks a lot. Thank you, Tim. Thank you very much. Ladies, are you sure? Staff, are you sure there's no one that wants to take a couple minutes and share?
Maybe Tammy.
I was thinking Tammy had...
I know.
They're very shy. They give them a chance though. Thank you so much. And Tim Kraft, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Dan, thank you.
It's an honor to get that award. Any special reports? Communication from the floor? This is an opportunity for someone to come to address the board about issues that are on the agenda or not on the agenda. You have up to five minutes, and is there anyone who would address the board at this time? All right, seeing no one, we will move on to the treasurer's recommendations.
We do have these even in items eight through H. Letter A is the approval of the board minutes, March 12, 2018. Letter B is the approval of March 2018 financial report, which by the way, through the March of 2018, we are on target with our revenues and expenditures. The approval of fiscal 2018 permanent supplemental appropriations resolutions. From time to time, we have monies that we received for the, for the different managing funds, like student, this time, and we need to appropriate them so that it can be spent during this fiscal year. Letter D is a resolution to approve enrollment and workers compensation program. Every year, we need to renew our agreement with the provider for our workers comp, and we will continue to work with Shively, doing the service for the same amount that has been actually for the last three years. They do a wonderful job for us. Letter E is a resolution to approve the implementation date for policies 6320 and 6325. This is a policy for procurement to secure services for beds and award beds for different, like different items, like buildings and purchase services. Back in June of 2017, you approved to implement a new policy for this current fiscal year. The federal government has extended a one-year grace period, because there are other things that we need to work on with the superintendent to implement than this, and I'm asking you to approve this, or give us another year to put together a dozen witnesses as to how we want to operate this particular policy for fiscal year 19. Approval of, letter F is the approval for payment of invoices. This is an invoice for DRC. DRC is a company who provides supplies for the gifted program. This is a year, a one-year-old bill that evidently when they needed an audit, it was a matter of long, they submitted those to us for payment, and now they're asking us to provide a payment with this number, so to make sure that that is a legitimate invoice, and I'm sure that is a legitimate invoice, so it is approved for payment. Letter G is the approval of temporary easement and waiver of compensation. This is a temporary easement at Heritage Middle School. The city's going to be doing some side work on the east part of the facility, and any time they do that, they need to ask a temporary permission for us to give them so they can do whatever repair work they need to do on the sidewalks of the school. Once that's done, they put it back together as it was given to them. Letter H is the approval of Anthem Group Cross and Group Shield, third-party illustrator. This is a company that provides our medical services. We have a three-year contract that expires June 30th, 2018. The union, we have an insurance committee that is comprised of union members for the classified and certificate staff and illustrators. We have some meetings to renew this policy, and we are going to extend a new three-year agreement with Anthem to provide the services. The first two years are going to be at a lock rate, and the third year will be an increase up to 3% cap. The good thing is that they, we shopped this year, and we have four different vendors providing their proposal, and Anthem is probably the best out of all four, and not only that, they're also reducing their admin fee by $10.67 per employee per month. So roughly, it's about a savings of $73,000 annually that we'll receive for the next two or three years by continuing the services to Anthem. And that will be my conclusion of my treasurer's section. Any questions?
Motion on treasurer's recommendations, A through each. Thanks, Tom, and a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion?
You had asked about the location of Heritage.
Yes.
Julio has pictures of where the sidewalk would go, it would be coming down, I believe it's the south side of the street, and so the area that we'd be bringing the easement to temporarily, we'd sort of lean back off the back edge. Is where you should park them, or is it...
Now, I've discussed this with Mr. Shively, they'll be doing this next summer, is the plan?
Yes. The person that I spoke with stated that it would be a project that would begin summer of 2019. So I, and just allow, my hope is that we treat it as we did the project out at Legend Liberty with Roundabout, working with the city, coordinating with the contractor, so that our, our schoolchildren are done with school before that work begins in and on our property. So that's going to be our...
This year, it's already August, it's about time for school to start.
That's okay. It's a good straight man. But, you know, in discussion, if you're familiar with it, there's kind of a loop going in and a loop coming out.
Yeah.
They're only taking the in-loop.
Correct.
So they're not going to make it impossible to get into where the...
Right, so as Tom said, it would be on the south side of the property as you enter into Heritage Middle School. So the north side exit, for better or worse, is still going to be a viable mode in and out of Heritage. So certainly, our bus transportation will not be interrupted, as that's on the other parking lot. This would strictly be parents coming in and out, food trucks going in and out of the deliveries there for the kitchen, and then any employees who park in that adjacent lot there to the north.
And as it's written, are we also approving the waiver of the...
There is correct. Would you call the roll?
Mr. Blowers?
Yes.
Mr. Blaine?
Yes.
Ms. Nicken?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
And Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, as is the case this time of year, we normally have some folks headed to different opportunities to make sure you're aware of Whitney Burris. Turned her resignation in on Friday, she's going to be moving out of state, a very good high school social studies teacher, so we wish her the best. So next month, we'll start having some new employees.
We're allowed to say she can't go?
We can, but we better make sure that we have somebody else, because she probably will go.
She needs to know it's grudging, because we really like, she did a nice job.
Yeah, she's done a wonderful job, absolutely. So that's the, we have no retirements on this one, we do have a few resignations. Also, there's a list of substitutes, a rather extensive list of guest teachers for next year on there. Item number eight, under other, approval for agreement with the school resource officer of the Newark City Police Department and the high school. And I can't say enough, you already know this, but how much we appreciate our relationship with the Newark City Police Department and their help with our, you know, safety at our school and so on. You have also a list of substitute teachers who have been in the same position over 60 days, and it's required by law that those teachers be, not be re-employed. And I always emphasize this time of year, it's not because of job performance, because we may not have a job for them, same position next year. Item C, approval extended service days, up two for several employees, and we'll make sure that we, you have the switch, Scott Cogburn and Michelle Watt will be switching, Scott will have 15, Michelle will have 10, and she'll have 10, that Scott took over that department. Under item B, students and curriculum, special education contracts with Shottet Heath in Loudonville. Item C, business agreement with Fish and Wildlife program. Mark has been working with that department. Mark, do you want to just say a couple things about that?
Sure. And about two months ago, two and a half months ago, through the Together We Grow, M. Roberts put us in contact with the higher department of Fish and Wildlife, wanted to come out to Liberty property, and I know the map is difficult to view there, the copy of it, but what they want to do in conjunction with us is to utilize this property for wildlife study with plant growth. All of the area that you see behind Liberty Middle School currently, there's what appears to be dead grass or dead weeds growing up there, some other stuff that a couple years ago, I know a science teacher had worked on improving that. They want to revamp that area, expand that area, and come in and plant and fill to make that a much more attractive area behind the school. And then out in front, where we have the retention area for the drainage, where you see some of the cattails, they want to work to alongside of that, away from and going, I guess, towards the school, and wrapping around to, again, help to plant through there, and help to beautify that area with some wild grasses and some other vegetation, and things such as that, and utilize our students with an opportunity for that community service piece, and take a little ownership and investment in the beautification of the property, again, and helping, helping the department of Fish and Wildlife in their study of these plants too. So that's what that's about.
And if you've ever been behind Legend, you know, some of you have, with our garden area and stuff, it kind of fits, we swoop that whole area back through there, it fits right in with that. So we appreciate that program on our property. Item two, discussion about the Lincoln property, as we went back on the east end, we went back and looked, and we never offered that for sale by auction or anything else, and so if we have an interest in that property, this would just be for a resolution to ask us to go out for, put that property up for auction. And we would have to advertise it for two weeks, and then offer an auction, which would be right here in this building, for that property. Item three, advertising a bid for the asphalt paving of the driveways at Legend, Liberty, and Evans. If you've been out that way, in the last couple of years, it's deteriorated quite a bit out there. I think what we're going to do is widen the road going back into the two buildings a little bit, as it's pretty narrow back there right now, so I'll widen that a little bit, and take care of that asphalt back there.
Item seven, we need to be separated, yes?
Well, we just said the numbers.
Just the person?
Yeah.
Yes. Super sound.
Yeah, sorry, this side, Larry Rogers, on the social media, my father.
Martha, do I have? Mike, do I have?
Just Martha.
Okay. Larry Rogers. Other than Larry?
Martha.
Two separate, two separate votes. All right, so we have superintendent's recommendations, other than in item seven, Larry Rogers and Mark Blowers, we will vote on them in just a bit. I need a motion to approve what...
So...
And a second? A second. Thanks, Warren. Discussion, please.
The driveways up at Legend and Liberty, I'm probably the only one that can go around and hold this. We had, when we built those buildings, I think it was like $300,000 extra that had been spent to build that ground up, it wasn't fit to hold the building. And this is at least the second time we've had to do a total renovation there. We may be wise to look at, do we have to put an extra base under those drives? I think we're doing it about every five years.
We'll have the engineers, or the engineer take a peek at that.
Long-term, or cost-effective, maybe spend more extra money to add, get that base where it's, that whole valley there. It's not really good yet. I also wanted to ponder Lincoln property. Do you mind what happens if you have that option at this point? I guess I'd still look if we've got an interest from someone wanting to do something really good for the community, but we're taking a risk that that wouldn't happen.
Well, we have to offer it before we sell it, unless we have, the board does not have to accept it. But we have to offer it, and the board can...
Pardon?
Do you want to turn this?
That is due, are you asking us for the resolution?
Just a resolution to go out and advertise for the option.
And go out to accept.
Part of that, part of the advertisement is the board can reject any and all offers on property. We did the same thing, and Cap Miller, a few years ago, went out on auction, and we decided to reject, and then...
I'm gonna make it impossible to get into where they're.
Right, so as Tom said, it would be on the south side of the property as you enter into Heritage Middle School. So the north side exit, for better or worse, is still going to be a viable mode in and out of Heritage. So certainly our bus transportation will not be interrupted as that's on the other parking lot. This would strictly be parents coming in and out, food trucks going in and out of the deliveries there for the kitchen, and then any employees who park in that adjacent lot there to the north.
And as it's written, are we also approving the waiver of the thousand sixty?
That is correct. Would you call the roll table?
Mr. Blowers?
Yes.
Mr. Blind?
Yes.
Ms. Nicken?
Yes.
Mr. Webber?
Yes.
And Ms. Carr?
Yes.
Ms. Cairns?
Okay, as is the case this time of year, we normally have some folks headed to different opportunities. To make sure you're aware, Whitney Burris turned her resignation in on Friday. She's gonna be moving out of state, a very good high school social studies teacher, so we wish her the best. Next month, we'll start having some new employees.
We're allowed to say she can't go?
We can, but we better make sure that we have somebody else, because she probably will go.
She needs to know it's Gretchen, because we really like her.
Yeah, yeah. She's done a wonderful job, absolutely. So we have no retirements on this one, we do have a few resignations. Also, there's a list of substitutes, a rather expensive list of guest teachers for next year on there. Item number eight under other approval for agreement with the school resource officer of the Newark City Police Department and the high school. And I can't say enough, you've already noticed, but how much we appreciate our relationship with the Newark City Police Department and their help with our, you know, safety at our school. You have also a list of substitute teachers who have been in the same position over sixty days. And it's required by all of these teachers to not be re-employed. And I always emphasize this time of year, it's not because of job performance, because we may not have a job for them. Same position next year. Item C, approval extended service days up two for several employees. And we'll make sure that we, you have to switch Scott Coged and Michelle Watt will be switching. Scott will have fifteen, she will have ten, Michelle will have ten. That's Scott took over that department. Under item B, students in curriculum, special education contracts with Shottet Heath and Loudonville. Item C, business agreement with Fish and Wildlife program. Mark has been working with that department. Mark, you wanna just say a couple things about that?
Sure. And about two months ago, two and a half months ago, through the Together We Grow, M. Roberts put us in contact with the hired department of Fish and Wildlife. Wanted to come out to Liberty property, and I know the map is difficult to view there, the copy of it, but what they want to do in conjunction with us is to utilize this property for wildlife study with plant growth. All of the area that you see behind Liberty Middle School currently, there's what appears to be dead grass or dead weeds growing up there. Some other stuff that a couple years ago, I know a science teacher had worked on improving that. They want to revamp that area, expand that area, and come in and plant and fill to make that a much more attractive area behind the school. And then out in front, where we have the retention area for the drainage, where you see some of the cattails, they wanna work to alongside of that, away from it going, I guess, towards the school and wrapping around to, again, help to plant through there and help to beautify that area with some wild grasses and some other vegetation and things such as that. And utilize our students with an opportunity for that community service piece and take a little ownership and investment in the beautification of the property, and helping the department of Fish and Wildlife in their study of these plants too. So that's what that's about.
And if you've ever been behind Legend, you know, some of you have with our garden area and stuff, it kind of fits, sweep that whole area back through there, it fits right in with that. So we appreciate that program on our property. Item two, discussion about the Lincoln property as we went back on the east end. We went back and looked, and we never offered that for sale by auction or anything else. And so if we have an interest in that property, this would just be for a resolution to ask us to go out for, put that property up for auction. And we'd have to advertise it for two weeks and then offer an auction, which would be right here in this building for that property. Item three, advertising bids for the asphalt paving of the driveways at Legend, Liberty, and Evans. If you've been out that way, in the last couple of years, it's deteriorated quite a bit out there. And I think what we're gonna do is widen the road going back into the two buildings a little bit. It's pretty narrow back there right now, so widen that a little bit and take care of that asphalt back there.
Item seven, we need to be separated.
Yes.
We need to separate the members.
Mr. Bird?
Yeah, sorry, did you set up side Larry Rogers on the social media?
Okay.
Martha Blowers? Mike Blowers?
Just Martha.
Okay. Larry Rogers? And Larry? Lewis?
Martha? Martha's husband?
The flowers? And Larry Rogers? Two separate, two separate rooms. So we have superintendent's recommendations other than in item seven. Now Larry Rogers and Martha Blowers, we will vote on them in just a bit. I need a motion to approve that. And then second?
I'll say.
Thanks, Warren. Discussion, yes.
The driveways up at Legend and Liberty, you probably don't wanna go around and all this. We had, when we built those buildings, I think it was like three hundred thousand dollars extra that had to be spent to build that ground up, wasn't fit to hold the building. And this is at least the second time we've had to do a total renovation there. We may be wise to look at, do we have to put an extra base under those drives? I think we're doing it about every five years.
We'll have the engineers, or the engineer technical team get that.
Long term, are those cost effective, or maybe you spend more extra money now to get that base where it's complete, that whole valley there? I also wanted to fund the Lincoln property. Do you mind what has to be that optioned at this point? I guess I sort of looked, we've got an interest from someone wanting to do something really good for the community. Are we taking a risk that that wouldn't happen?
We'll have to offer it before we sell it, unless we have, the board does not have to accept. But we have to offer it, the board can, pardon?
I'd rather just auction it off.
That is, are you asking us for the resolution?
Just a resolution to go out and advertise for the auction. Part of that, part of the advertisement is the board can reject any and all offers on property. We did the same thing at Cap Miller's a few years ago, went down and auctioned, we decided to reject and then sold the building shortly after.
Do you wanna set that one aside, Tom?
Just so we're aware, it's, it's like this one brought to people, but I said, we can reject.
We're doing good stuff on it right now.
We could misuse it here for that, being such an important location and part of the family.
That's a good thing, one thing to protect you, the board can reject any offer and sell it.
All right, so superintendent's recommendations other than Larry Rogers and Martha Blowers here.
Ms. Nicken?
Yes.
Mr. Webber?
Yes.
Mr. Blind?
Yes.
Mr. Blowers?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Ms. Cairns? And now for taking individual, Mr. Larry Rogers as a substitute.
The motion? Sub move.
All right. Webber, item two, Mr. Blind.
Any discussion?
Mr. Webber?
Yes.
Mr. Blind?
Yes.
Ms. Nicken?
Epstein.
And Mr. Webber? Or then Ms. Carr?
Yes.
Ms. Cairns? And now for Martha Blowers. Motion for Martha Blowers. Thank you, Warren, second. Don't be tall. Any discussion? Character notwithstanding. Call the roll table. Mr. Webber?
Yes.
Mr. Blind?
Yes.
Mr. Blowers?
Epstein.
Ms. Nicken?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Ms. Cairns?
Tom, this was very nice, but I think she should have taken it. You might be in agreement.
We have Board Education report, is on, education is on anything? Nothing? Okay. Then board discussion, then Mike will start down with you.
Well, congratulations to Levi and Hunter, good choice of Audubon. Angels of eighty-nine, Jeff, Julio, Bill, they're still back there. Thank you very much, because once again, you know, it's, we have so many great organizations in the community that give back all the time, and it's so good that you guys do what you do. Thank you again. Julio and staff, congratulations, makes me proud to sit here, it really does. And I'm really proud to be here on board. The Newark High School Drama Department presented the Little Mermaid a few weeks ago. And the director, David Williams, and vocal director, Mike Woodlesworth, and the orchestra director, Lee Hour, and assistant director, Zach Mizelin, and choreographer, Stephanie Stanton, and the technical director, Samantha Stoker, and the stage man, Haley Drake. And then, of course, the whole tech crew and all the actors and all the kids involved. I just, I took, I was with my two grandsons, and they really, I mean, to watch the kids interacting with what our high school students presented, it was amazing. And I'll take this opportunity to say, I think we need to look at maybe updates and things. We're gonna have twenty, I'll just put that out there, okay? Because the kids who put these on, they deserve to have and they should have the technical support to do the best job they can, so, and they did a great job. So again, congratulations to our drama department, thank you, enjoy the night.
I'd also like to offer my thanks to Phil, the other folks from the Angels of eighty-nine, and once again, that is Angels of eighty-nine, twenty-four Monroe Avenue, Newark, Ohio, four three oh five five, for those who would like to help them help our students. Also, as Mike said, congratulations to Levi and Hunter, to make it to state is a plain accomplishment. Julio and his staff, that is a real accomplishment this year especially. They can be in the top five percent as far as how the audit goes any year is an accomplishment. And this year, that staff went through a lot of changes, a lot of loss, and they had like two different treasurers and an acting treasurer between the year and the time the audit went on. For them to hold it together and to get this award is amazing. Speaking of the treasurer's staff, condolences go out to Myra, who lost her husband last night. Other than that, get out and support our kids, lots of concerts, lots of athletics, lots of things going on.
Well, again, Julio, I wanna congratulate your staff on the award. I think that's just a great part of determination, knowing that you all those things. And to the Angels of eighty-nine, that's really, you know, I think a lot of people in the city realize that there are organizations like these that really reach out and touch our kids. As you always say, it's a great time to be a cat. And it shows through the different organizations such as these, and help kids to get better themselves. Thank you.
So I've always been impressed with our students' generosity and the amount of fundraising that the students themselves do in the school, whether it be the Cherry Valley Super Bowl or all the way up to the high school with the Key Club and the Wildcatathon, raising funds to picture childhood cancer, the connection with the Ohio State University. And I think a great thing, reason and impetus and an influence on our students to become such cheerful givers is because of the examples of the community organizations that they see every day. They see people from different businesses coming in to leave with them at John Clem, or they see churches giving school supplies at Wilson Middle School, and they see Angels and the Class of eighty-nine Angels, and they see all these community groups that are willing to help. And we're teaching our children through this generosity to be generous. And you can really see, it's really reflected in the children in our building. And so I'm really proud of these relationships that the school district has with the community. When you see the kids and the community members working together to create good within our own community, it's just amazing. And so, you know, and they talk about these are small donations, and they're not. The kids, they get the twenty-five dollars for a birth certificate, that's so much more than twenty-five dollars to that family. You know, and by the time that kid's in high school, they're raising money for childhood cancer. So these gifts really, even the small ones, and the gifts of just time and not even the money, are so impactful on our community. And we talk, you know, so emotional. This is very important for our students, and I love to see that the community gives to the kids and the kids give back to the community, and that's just a great, a great circle. It's really amazing. So thank you to everyone that donates or volunteers in our building, and thank you for the students that raise the money voluntarily.
The pay it forward concept in this community is so strongly taken that it's breathtaking to hear the things the community does, or the people does in this community, just like the Angels does. There are a lot of communities that are committed to do the same thing, and it's just overwhelming and very impressive to that, that makes me even do, want to do more about it. What can we do to help the students in our community? The athletes, I'll congratulate them too, it's, you know, over forty years of working in the state, I think is a, what an accomplishment. And it's good to know that kids are interested in athletics every year. The staff, the treasurer department, you know, six thousand governmental entities are being audited by the state auditors. Only five percent gets that award with the stations, which is by roughly, is three hundred entities in the state of Ohio. It is a great accomplishment, and they do do a hard work, they, and they, I'm very, very impressed with what they do and how diligently they have done their work, especially in the two models that we had in the treasurer's department over the last year with the past, and retired, and passed up retirement. So they truly have put it together and stayed strong. And that's a, that's a great thing to have in our department, so I'm very pleased, and I'll thank them all for that.
I usually end with it's a great time to be a cat, and I'm gonna start off with it's a great time to be a cat tonight for these reasons. I think you guys said it best, you're talking about, you know, sitting here thinking a few years ago when the big thing was college and career readiness. And we really focused on college and career readiness, but we threw another C in there, and that was community readiness. We talked about that C for our students, and it's just great, and I agree wholeheartedly with them. I've talked about, they have so many good role models to understand how to be a good teammate, a good community member, whether it be our businesses, our social agencies, or just individuals. We see that all the time, and Phil, I've seen firsthand what your group, the Angels, have done. And, you know, I know you guys do it in honor of your classmates who have passed away, and I just think that's awesome, and our families have to be so proud. That, because as Bev said, it's twenty-five dollars doesn't seem like a lot of money, but it is a tremendous amount. And so it's neat to see our kids, our students following the footsteps of our community. And so a lot of those students are gonna end up, you know, statistically, it'd be seventy-five to eighty percent of graduates end up in their hometown. So it's nice to see that future generations are learning how to do this, so. You know, I'm sitting here thinking it's a great time to be a cat. These two wrestlers here on the mat really excelled, but I would tell you off the mat, they've excelled more. Levi was a student, or assistant of the month last month, if you'll remember. They're very good leaders, and they learn that through an extracurricular event, how to be good teammates, how to be good leaders. And so really proud of those two, you know, Julio's group, just getting that award particularly this past year, as Tom had mentioned, the trials that that group went through. Very good with the fiscal part of the audit, but they're also good people, are very helpful to our end of the world here at the school. It's been a very fast year, but we're doing a lot of curricular things, we're achieving very well, our students are. You know, our programs, we continue to have programs for our students that are meeting their needs. So we have a fine arts program, and Mike talked about just one little part of the fine arts program. We have athletic programs here, we have civic programs, I think Bev might have mentioned, I think the Key Club's got a fundraiser coming up, our students are raising money for brain cancer folks. And, you know, it's just a period of time where it's already, it doesn't look like it outside, but it's already April. I think we have thirty-some days of school left, maybe thirty-five, thirty-four? Thirty-three, there's a teacher that's counting in the back. I'm here a year round, so I don't, just tell me when graduation is, but thirty, so it's been a very quick year, but it's been a very good year here, you know, and, you know, we've set our sights on planning for the future, and we're really excited about our programs that are going on. But I wanna, I wanna just take the time to thank our students and our staff members, our parents and our community for doing this positive momentum rolling that we have in our district. As Dan Bybee, a former board member, used to talk about that positive momentum, and you feel it, you know, and so. It's, I'll end with it's a great time to be a cat, too, Tim.
Very good, very good. A shout out first and foremost to the lacrosse team for their win over the weekend. And if you follow our lacrosse team, some great, great young people. And they have been working hard, practicing hard, and have not been successful on the field as far as winning. But as far as competing and giving their best every time they're out there. But they were able to win eight to seven, I believe, over Zinni. And so awesome, awesome for them. That Key Club fundraiser is five to eight in the commons this Saturday for cancer, so wonderful thing. They're, the Mermaid, fabulous, gifted actors, wonderful, wonderful stuff. And I'm gonna hold this up, can we play Zoom? Not me, Bev and, oh, you're good, aren't you? And Humble, we love that. But keep the momentum going, it is, it's an awesome time to be a part of Newark City Schools and to be a, a part of that is everybody. And if your kids used to go here, if you've never had kids that went here, but you happen to be a part of Newark City Schools, you're helping young people move forward towards the future. Wonderful teachers, wonderful administrators, the ladies who do, work with Julio, and I'm gonna say Julio is smart on his own, but they make him look smarter. And I know that, 'cause I have an assistant in my office, and, you know, she makes me look like I have a clue, and I appreciate that. But I called Myra the other day, 'cause I got one of those things from insurance. You've had that before, right? Your insurance bill comes and you're going, huh? I didn't know they wrote these things in Greek. So I called Myra and asked her, and she explains it to me, connects me to the people I'm supposed to talk to and all that kind of thing. So if you've ever messed with an insurance bill, and most of you within the sound of my voice right now have had to go through that, it's wonderful to have those people to help you through those things. So it's not just, but we'll end with the great kids that we have, wonderful, wonderful students. It's awesome to see them doing all kinds of things, from the stage to the lacrosse field, to the state wrestling match. I think they had OMA competitions this past weekend, so musical talent going to display all over the place. And sometime, the winter's gonna end, and we'll play baseball and softball. I think they're playing already, and it's gonna end with just a wonderful experience I had Friday night at a middle school track meet, which is about four hours long. And in snow and rain that is going sideways. I know because the lights were on over at Watkins, and you could just see it coming down. And the kids are running, and my daughter's going, Dad, I was running, and the ice was just pelting me in the face while I was running. And I said, you know, that's how you get tough. Well, I didn't know what else to say. Get your head out of the sunroof. But it was, I mean, it was just, but you're standing there, and I don't know that if I'm not feeling a little bad today because of what I did Friday night, you're standing there, and, but the thing that amazes me is our students are doing that, and they're going out and, you know, this afternoon it was a little chilly, but they went and they ran. And they've been doing that since the first part of March. Lacrosse kids have been out there playing, the baseball players, the softball players, they've been out doing all those things. It's just, it's just so great to see our kids giving it their all. And so if you have good thoughts for them, they're taking state tests this week and next week. And I have my own thoughts on the state test, I'm not gonna say them here, I'm just gonna say, we've got great kids. And way more than what a test tells you is how great our kids are. And so we'll end with it is, indeed, a wonderful time to be a cat. I will take, before I take a motion to adjourn, we have an adjourn to executive session. It will be very brief, the personnel matter, and there is no action to follow. So I give a motion to move to a brief executive session.
Sub move.
Now, so you might, Warren, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That make it easier? We have to do it differently? If you want it differently, that's personal, you're fine.